The roll, trustee Lawrence.
Here.
Trustee Law.
Here.
Trustee Lee Blatt.
Put your microphone.
Here.
The whole world deserves to hear you, Mary.
I apologize. Trustee Healy.
Here.
Trustee Katsinas.
Here.
Trustee Malani.
Here.
Mayor Dodge.
Here.
Stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Approval of the August 4th, 2025 Committee of the Whole Minutes.
Mr. Chairman.
I'm sorry?
Mr. Chairman.
Trustee Katsinas.
I move to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of the Committee of the Whole of August 4th, 2025.
Second.
Is the motion a second? Any questions or comments? Call a roll.
Trustee Katsinas.
Aye.
Trustee Lee Blatt.
Aye.
Trustee Lawrence.
Aye.
Trustee Lawler.
Aye.
Trustee Healy.
Aye.
Trustee Malani.
Aye.
Mayor Dodge.
Aye.
We now move to the non-scheduled citizens and visitors for agenda-specific public comment.
Steve? Would you like to come up and address the board?
Thank you very much. Thank you, Board. Thank you for this time to talk to you. First off, my name is Steve Sodaborg. I have come to Orland Park all my life for shopping, restaurants, friends, and so forth. So it is a big community in our overall area that many people come and visit. So I am a USPA and master for pickleball. And I know on the agenda today is pickleball courts for your community. And right off the bat, I want to just thank you for everything you've done so far for the sport of pickleball, for the pickleball community who is here to support your efforts and what you are going to do in the future for pickleball in your community. It will not only affect your community and help your people that live in your community grow in connecting and making friendships and growing in an up-and-coming sport that is going to be an Olympic sport in about four years. You are going to be in the forefront by adding these courts to your community. But what I want to do is I want to let you know that in your decision-making, which might already be done, I'm not here to tell you what to do. We appreciate what you're going to do. But if you do it, do it right. There's right ways to do it and there's wrong ways to do it. One of your complexes that you're going to think about doing or already in the process of doing, what you're initially going to do, which I heard, 10 courts at Dugan Park or something down the line, was absolutely awesome. The pickleball community all around here, not just in your community of Orland Park, but all the surrounding communities were very, very excited about this news. We do not have a pickleball complex in the southwest suburbs of Chicago. We don't even have them in Chicago. So you would be in the forefront if you were to build a complex that has a minimum of eight courts. The one that was proposed was 10. That would be awesome for the sport of pickleball. It would be awesome for your community, bringing people in from other communities and around the country. Because when you have a 10-court facility, you can run, which I have done, over eight Chicagoland classic tournaments. You can draw people from all over the country to come into your community. If you look at the US Open down in Naples, Florida, which started in 2016, they have grown from 800 initial people playing in the tournament to over 3,000 people from all 50 states and over 30 countries throughout the world are coming to Colorado County in Naples, Florida, because they built a pickleball complex worthy of bringing that type of people in. It will cause economic development for Orland Park through pickleball. Pickleball is the fastest-growing sport in America and in the world. And it is a people's game. It is a numbers game. And it can help everybody in your community if you are just to do it right. Okay? So that's all I want to say. First of all, though, thank you for everything you are doing, past, present, and in the future. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Joe Solak.
This is going to be a tough act to follow. I have a few comments regarding the Dugan Park rescoping. As you may know, according to Time Magazine, pickleball saw a 46% increase in players from 2023 to 2024, and an astounding 311% increase over the past three years. Despite this rapid growth, the village currently only has one dedicated pickleball court. Clearly, our community is underserved when it comes to access to this sport. To date, the village has already invested $455,926.25 in engineering costs, consulting fees, and demolition of the cultural center in preparation for redevelopment. In addition, the state has provided $600,000 grants to help finance this project. If the project is moved or substantially changed, the village risks losing that grant and incurring new engineering and consulting fees on top of what has already been spent. The potential loss could reach $1 million in taxpayer money for this project. Put simply, the moment a shovel of dirt is turned for a new location or altered plan, the village could be $1 million in the hole, literally. In my opinion, that represents poor use of village funds. You claim you are listening, but the resident input of 12 public meetings, unanimous approval by the Recreation Board, the Planning Commission, and the previous board are apparently about to be ignored tonight. Please listen to your constituents. I strongly urge you to support option one, the original plan, which preserves state funding and better serves the recreational needs of our community. Thank you.
Thank you. I need a motion. I'd like to take an item out of order. Let's consider Dick's Sporting Goods. Your motion?
Mr. Chairman.
Trustee Katsinas.
I move to re-- oh, I'm sorry. So hold on one second. I'm very sorry here.
Just consider Dick's Sporting Goods.
I move to recommend to the Village Board to approve the term sheet between the Village of Orland-- I'm sorry.
Go ahead. The motion was just to move it up, so we could--
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's fine.
Go ahead and read it.
No, just go ahead and just-- this is a motion to amend the agenda.
Aye. This is a motion to amend the agenda.
Second.
Second. Motion and second. Call a roll, please.
Trustee Katsinas.
Aye.
Trustee Lawrence.
Aye.
Trustee Lawler.
Aye.
Trustee Lee Blatt.
Aye.
Trustee Healy.
Aye.
Trustee Malani.
Aye.
Mayor Dodge.
Aye.
And then, if we could, we have some representatives here from Dick's. Donna, did you want to introduce the team here from Dick's? And then trustee Katsinas will put the motion back to the board.
Hello, I'm Donna Q. I'm a partner in the law firm of Foley and Lardner on behalf of Dick's Sporting Goods. We sure appreciate all the hard work on the term sheet and the PowerPoint that I think you're going to see, which tells the story very well. We're mainly here to answer questions about either the proposal or the transaction. And I just wanted to make sure you meet the team members. Some of you have already met Vince Kornow, Senior VP of Real Estate and Construction for Dick's, hiding back there. And then Bill Sacalo, Senior Director of Real Estate for Dick's. We have also-- where's Mike Eikoff? Raise your hand, back here. Okay, he's our financial expert, Managing Director of Incentives for Grant Thornton, and his colleague Sydney Moore, also with Grant Thornton. So we're available for any questions.
Hold one second. Why don't we put the motion on the floor?
Mr. Chairman.
Trustee Katsinas.
I move to recommend to the Village Board to approve the term sheet between the Village of Orland Park and Dick's Sporting Goods for the redevelopment of the former Sears parcel at 2 Orland Square Drive, Orland Park, Illinois 60462.
Second.
There's a motion and a second before we call the roll. Eddie, do we want to do a quick presentation? You didn't introduce Ed Lilo, our staffer, but he's there. That's quite all right. But let's-- we'll take any questions from the board, or Ed, if you want to update everyone.
Yeah, I can run through the quick presentation that outlines the term sheet. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and the rest of the Board of Trustees. The approval before you tonight is the first step in creating a redevelopment agreement for the former Sears space at Orland Square Mall. The term sheet is a non-binding document that outlines the framework for the incentives that the village will provide. And upon approval of the term sheet, the village and Dick's Sporting Goods will negotiate a final redevelopment agreement that further defines these terms and how they'll be executed. The intent is to negotiate this agreement by September 15th, 2025. And the incentives will be used as an inducement for Dick's Sporting Goods to pursue the redevelopment, and the remainder will be used for regional stormwater improvements at Orland Square Mall. The initial payments that Dick's is requesting will be made prior to Orsiam Mall simultaneously with the closing on the purchase of this former Sears parcel by Dick's Sporting Goods. The village intends to intensify $6 million for the acquisition of the former Sears parcel, and the village will make payment by January 31st, 2026. Subsequent payments will be made to Dick's Sporting Goods for additional TIF-eligible costs, up to $800,000 in additional costs. The total payments are not to exceed $6.8 million. The conditions of the incentive payment are that Dick's Sporting Goods opens to the public a Dick's House of Sport containing no less than 90,495 square feet of sales area and 28,566 square feet of non-sales area for at least one day. The non-sales area will include some of-- some or all of the following: a climbing wall, indoor batting cage, golf simulator, yoga classes, juice bar, running track, and of course, their outdoor athletic field. Construction shall commence by May of 2027, with the opening of the House of Sport being in the spring of 2029. Some of the terms by Dick's, the redevelopment agreement will not include a minimum expenditure on construction for the House of Sport, a minimum number of jobs created, and there will be no limitation on their ability to appeal the assessment for property taxes, except that if the equalized assessed value falls below $80 per square foot for the Dick's Sporting Good facility, then Dick's will pay the difference between that and what the assessed value is to the village via a payment in lieu of taxes. The village intends to create a TIF to recoup the incentive. The TIF will be used to recoup the initial incentive payment and will be used to pay the additional eligible expenses. In addition, the TIF revenue will use approximately $3 million for regional stormwater improvements that will aid this redevelopment and other redevelopments of Orland Square Mall in the future. While it's not a part of this phase, Dick's Sporting Goods also agreed to, in the future, being included in a business district with a sales tax not to exceed 1% that can also be used to recoup funds for the incentive. And that concludes my presentation.
Any comments or questions from the board?
Mr. Mayor.
Trustee Healy.
When you said about the real estate tax calculation, that we would get a payment in lieu of taxes, would that be the gross tax payment or just the Village of Orland Park line item on the real estate tax?
It's the difference between the entire tax bill.
So, okay, so it's not just Or-- it's their whole tax bill?
Trustee Healy, being that it's in a TIF, if it's a TIF, the village, the TIF gets all of the taxes when it's in a TIF district. And that-- so I hope that answers--
Okay, wait, until we get-- all right.
So we get all of it when we're on a TIF.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Trustee Lee Blatt.
So, and I'm asking a question because, like, just as a resident, I would-- we're getting our money back, right? In this, like, we-- in the-- over the course of time, the village's investment comes back to the village in a manner that is-- that is good for us, good for the village itself, right? You know, like, all-- we use-- we use a lot of, you know, we use TIF and everything like that. And I think that those are useful terms and, you know, important, obviously, in terms of negotiation. But just, like, in general, just if we're just speaking in a very, you know, just simple way, I know you were starting to answer. Sorry, I keep talking.
No, that's okay. Yes, the intent is to recoup the funds via the TIF increment that the TIF generates. And what they're using for the basis of those things are the estimates of what the taxes should be after the improvements are made. Obviously, there's, you know, chances that some of these things might not come to fruition, but that is the intent of the TIF district. And then ultimately, if there's a further assistance that's needed to recoup the funds, the village has the ability to implement the business district as well, which could take a 1% sales tax for this area or other areas that include Orland Square Mall to help recoup those funds.
Thank you.
Any comments or questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Trustee Healy.
The TIF district, it takes a lot of reports, a lot of things. I mean, I'm just-- I like the idea. I love the idea of doing it. But the numbers are hard to swallow for me, meaning that we're the only ones stepping out. I'd like-- there's no details on a TIF. We haven't, as far as I know, I haven't seen any reports on our advancement on a TIF planning and so on.
So right now, the-- I think before the board right now is just the term sheet for looking into the redevelopment agreement, but we will be further investigating the TIF and providing those reports to you.
So this vote is not to approve the financing, it's just simply to look into it?
This is the pre-agreement. The next agreement will be coming to you on or before-- by the second meeting in September. That would be the redevelopment agreement. So this is the first step. This is the first step, and then the final vote will be in September.
Is there any estimates when these TIF details will be coming out, or?
We'll get them out very shortly, in the next few days.
Okay, thanks, George.
Mr. Chairman.
Trustee Lee Blatt.
Thank you. I just wanted to confirm, this conversation about the TIFs and the money, when did this initiate?
I would say we started initial discussions probably at least a year ago.
Okay. And that-- okay. And so what we're looking at today, this was the result of, like, a year of--
Of initial conversations, gauging interest, and then getting to the actual terms that will be the structure of the redevelopment agreement.
Okay, so what we're doing today is just looking at what's been done and saying, okay, continue the process.
Correct. This is a summary of the discussion so far. And then, like I said, once we start getting-- or enter into the redevelopment agreement, those will be more clearly defined in how each of these terms will be executed.
Mr. Chairman.
Trustee Katsinas.
Ed, we're hearing a lot about big numbers and that. One thing I'd be curious to hear from Dick's, which was included in their presentation, when they come into a development like Simon Mall, what it does not only for Dick's, but also for the local economy, specifically those stores, you know, in and around Orland Square. So I heard it raise as much as by 30%, if I'm not mistaken. So if they could just address that really quickly, we're hearing all these big numbers. What are the fruits of doing this for the village as a whole?
I believe my colleague Vince Kornow addressed that in the prior meeting in June. And there was a pretty significant deck that kind of showed what the difference was. I don't know what the percentages are off the top of my head, but there is a significant bump in mall traffic and a significant bump in mall sales when a House of Sport opens in any given mall in the country. And we've got 24 of these open now. So we're-- every time we open one, we're seeing the same thing, and it's starting to validate what, you know, what we're seeing with those increased sales and that increased foot traffic in any given mall that we do this at.
Just a quick question. What is the difference between what you're building here in Orland Square and what we already have in Orland? What is the difference between the two stores?
It's a much more intense merchandise assortment, so a lot higher-level merchandise that we don't get in some of our typical Dick's stores. And it's a bigger experiential component. We're going to have batting cages. We're going to have climbing walls. We're going to have an outdoor field. You know, we're going to have all kinds of experiences associated with that. So it's more experiential. And then there's an elevated merchandising component as well.
You have pickleball courts.
We don't have any pickleball courts at this point.
Thought I'd ask.
We sell pickleball gear.
Never mind.
We do sell pickleball gear.
Maybe in the future.
Well, they might-- careful, they might talk you into a banner sponsoring a tournament, just saying.
Thank you.
Any other questions on the board? Ed, one of the things that-- happy you're here. Happy to be investing with Dick's in this, because we're solving, Ed, if I'm not mistaken, a six-to-an-eight-year problem with the dead Sears. So the reality here is what you're seeing this board do is try to thoughtfully find a way to use public-private partnership, because that's effectively what this is. So that when you're successful, you're sending increased property taxes and increased sales taxes, and it lifts up that in the mall, which is a pretty big deal for everybody.
Yeah.
So that property had, quite frankly, George, I think it had generated quite seriously in terms of its physical condition, so.
Yeah, physically, I mean, roof was collapsing. There was a lot of problems in there. And to trustee Katsinas's question, I recall that sales growth is two or two to three times more than just their regular Dick's store. But that's only one element of it. This is over 200,000 square-foot vacant parcels. Dick's can take one, a half of it, and then there is going to be more retail in the other half. So this is a win-win-win for everybody, for the community, for the mall, for Dick's, obviously, and for the village because of increased sales tax.
So looking forward to this with-- I think if we can get everybody aligned, we can probably do this again in about a month.
Okay.
And then we'll get scheduled and make sure everybody knows to come see Dick's for pickleball gear. Pretty sure that's gonna-- pretty sure that's gonna happen. All right. There's a motion and a second. If there's no other questions, call a roll, please.
Trustee Katsinas.
Aye.
Trustee Lee Blatt.
Aye.
Trustee Lawrence.
Aye.
Trustee Lawler.
Aye.
Trustee Healy.
Aye.
Trustee Malani.
Aye.
Mayor Dodge.
Aye. Thank you.
We'll move on to the annual Parkway Tree Pruning Program Phase One.
Mr. Mayor.
Trustee Lawler.
I'd like to make a motion. I move to recommend to the Village Board to approve and authorize the execution of a contractor agreement between the Village of Orland Park and Smitty's Tree Service, Inc., as the lowest-cost qualified responsive proposal for the annual Parkway Tree Pruning Program. Phase One for a cost of $442,220 for 2025, a cost of $321,405 for 2026, and a cost of $271,520 for 2027, with the option to extend the contract for three additional years, 2028 to 2030, for a cost of $145,350 for 2028, a cost of $217,019 for 2029, and a cost of $142,196 for 2030, for a total not to exceed a cost of $1,539,710.
Second.
There's a motion, excuse me, and a second. Joel, why don't you take us through this? I'm sure we'll have questions.
Very good. Thank you, Board, Mayor. About a month ago, we wanted to make sure we had a comprehensive briefing to you, so tonight I will be providing that, and then, of course, the approval that we're looking for. So the overall, the program, the key thing is that it's planned and reoccurring process to do the pruning of the trees. It really helps maintain the health, structure, and the safety of the trees. And it also manages the tree size as well as their appearance. The goal of the pruning program is to improve tree structure, enhance tree vigor, increase aesthetic appeal, provide adequate clearances, and maintain safe conditions in the right of way, while reducing costs associated with storm damage and tree failure. With the recent storm that came through, a lot of those dead branches do fall down, and this would also reduce that kind of cost that we would have for cleanup. Our primary objective is to establish a really a comprehensive annual pruning service that we'd be doing. And to also, it clarifies the maintenance responsibilities. So tonight, we're talking about that, the pruning actual program. Oops, I knew it, always jumps on me. The key aspects of this, looking at how many trees we have in the village, it's over 36,000 trees. Over 28,000 are in the parkways. So our-- this program is addressing those parkways. We broke the village up into seven zones and systematically doing that work for seven years. The first year, we were going to do it for six years, because we're going to try to get two of the zones this fiscal year. And then the techniques, it's really, we follow the arborist guidelines for the techniques when we do this, because we don't want to hurt the trees, obviously. Attached, you can see the zones, the green zone, Zone One, and then the purple, if you can see that, that's Zone Five. Those were the two that we identified for the fiscal year 2025. We did that because of the size and also the concerns of some of the tree health in those zones. And the staff really knows the trees very well, and so those were identified first on the plan. And then you can see the following zones that we would do in the village. Again, I talked a little bit about this, but this is-- we're going to, for our notification, we want to make sure that we get this out to social media, a website, newsletters, get that out to the residents so they know. Public Works will also be sending out, specific to the zones, a notification that we'll be working in that area. So we're also looking at a timeframe. We generally do the pruning in the late fall. That's when trees start to get dormant, and that's the best time with the health of trees to do that. And again, we talked a little bit about this earlier, but tree health, make sure it looks aesthetically pleasing, but also, all the work is done by professional arborists and tree care specialists. This is also a phase-in approach, so I did make just a minor note that if people wanted to still continue to do the pruning while they're in the other zones, we encourage that. We'll get to their zone as we slowly migrate into the cycle of pruning. What's not in the scope, the program does not include private property, so a resident should know that. Also, our tree crews will do all the village parks and the facility grounds. Sometimes that's neglected, because they're really focused on the trees along the parkways. As you saw, it's the greatest number of trees we have in the village, so they're out there right now. But we will still, emergency situations, especially like we had just a couple days ago, to kind of clean up after storm damages. And also, we do road improvement program. And when we do that, we try to get in front of those large trucks that could damage the trees, so we can do those. But that's a popcorn effect, and so it's not particular to one zone, but we'll still make sure we prune the trees before that. All right, so we went out to bid, and we-- All right, so we went out to bid and we had, the following, Smitty's Services was the lowest, that's how it's kind of broken down, it's in the motion as well per year. And we had four out of six, so that's pretty good. These are pre-qualified vendors that the village chooses. Now, take any questions.
Mr. Chairman.
Trustee Malani?
Just, just curious, looking at year 29 and year 30 there, during the cycle, who's responsible for keeping the trees pruned to standard? Or do we, does everybody kind of get a buy moving forward once this program goes into effect?
So Public Works will do some emergency ones, but we encourage the residents as we begin this cycle, if they're doing their own trees until their, their zone is getting done.
But more than likely, we're not going to run around and try and give out violations because their trees aren't pruned.
Correct.
Because we're coming in the future.
We're coming into it, yes.
Okay, all right, and, you know, looking at the proposals, that, you know, the, the out years look to be much lower than we expected, which, which is good.
Yes.
You know, I, I think this will be a nice service, you know, once we get this moving to provide to our residents and provide consistency, you know, I think that'll, that'll be nice. You know, again, I wish we could have done this during the budget cycle.
Yes.
You know, but I also understand the timing of the project because fall's coming and we need to start trees, so I totally get the timing here, so.
Yes, that, that was the purpose, you know, that we would have to wait another.
Another year.
Year plus, so.
That'd be 2031.
Yes.
Before those people get to.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Trustee Lawler?
I have a couple of questions for you. Joel, I know we're going to be cutting the, the street side of the trees. Will they also be cutting above the sidewalks so that there's no load clearance?
Yes, sir.
So what happens in some cases where you do have a residence who does have a tree on both sides, but it's still hanging over the sidewalk? Will they still just cut that, just to be clear?
Correct.
Okay, good.
Plus, we don't want the tree to look odd, so they'll be making, you know, it'll be lopsided.
Okay, good. And then when Smitty's is out there doing the cutting, will we have someone from your staff out there to verify that it's being done correctly?
Yes, we're determining if it's in-house staff or maybe even another professional arborist doing that oversight for us to inspect their work.
Okay, and last recommendation, I know with a lot of projects, we've talked about this previously, about notifying residents and, like I said, maybe make a mention of, you know, on the streets when we're getting ready to do those streets, maybe put out the signs with, on little sticks, explaining exactly what's going to be coming, you know, maybe do it a week or two ahead of time so people know.
Very good, good comment, thank you.
Any other questions, comments?
Mr. Mayor? I have, still have my objections to this. This is a service that we've never had before. I don't think anywhere, anything is wrong that we're doing, we're, right now, and I just look at it as a spending additional money, in this case, a million and a half dollars, and we find out how easy it is to spend money. At this rate and a half hour, we've spent 6.8 plus 1.5, that's 8.3. Sure, we'll get this 6.8 back, but this 1.5 is different. This is a, this is going to result in a higher tax rate because there's no revenue coming in to pay for this. We have to, it'll, it'll be higher real estate taxes, marginally higher, you know, year by year, but over time, they do add up, and this is how these real estate taxes rise and rise and rise, and although it's a small portion, I'm just, something that's unnecessary, at some point, we could fund every good idea and that would be great, but at some point, you gotta say, I, I, we gotta draw a line somewhere and say we can't pay for everything. And so I'm, personally, I remain opposed to this. Thanks.
Mr. Mayor?
Trustee Leafblatt?
So I don't, this is just, this is over the, between now and 2030, and it's a village maintenance issue, as I see it. This is not something that would affect the assessed value of a property in terms of any kind of triennial assessment by the Cook County Assessor, you know, it may, so I don't view this as something that's going to add to property taxes or any other taxes, it's just going to be a service to the public so that they don't have to hire somebody to do it or try to do it themselves. Am I correct in that?
Correct.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Trustee Katsinas, right back there.
Joel, just going forward, you've been through the budget process. Do you see any other programs that might take a haircut because of doing this? Because you only have so much fun, so many funds in your budget. So I think to Bill's question, are you going to have to increase, would we have to increase the levy to pay for this?
So we do have some costs in there, so when we have to do emergency kind of trims and so forth like that, so that's the, the benefit we think that we'll see is some reduction there. And as, as you get a cycle going, it does help reduce the cost in the out years as that cycle goes. It's kind of like starting the engine and you have to get it going before you start realizing some of that savings back with the cost on operating dollars.
But you don't see anything in your budget right now going forward that you're going to have to cut in order to do this program?
At this time, we'll have to evaluate it as the program goes, but, and we can look at that during the budget cycle as well.
And then how is it determined, the zones, how they're going to be done, by a team in Public Works, if you can put that on the record?
Yes, so the map had it, so when we did the breakup of the zones, it was really working with our arborists that we have on staff, they're looking at the type and the number of trees, so we kind of, we're trying to keep it in a, right, a zone of about 3,500 trees, and that's how we broke it apart, as well as the condition of those trees and the age of those trees. That was how the staff stood out and drew the lines. There was no particular zone over the other zone, it's based on the age of the, the condition of the trees.
Okay, thank you.
Trustee Lawrence?
Mr. Mayor and the board and residents, I note that, and as you no doubt know, the Parkway property is the property of the Village of Orland Park, and the trees in those parkways are also the property of the Village of Orland Park. I note also that trees are an asset for our community that help to moderate temperature. Those of you who have big trees anywhere near you or walk or ride your bike, as soon as you go under one, you feel the effect. Trees that are trimmed properly are healthier, they have a longer lifespan, they're less likely to become diseased. Diseased trees need to be replaced, and when they start getting bigger and diseased, cutting them down and replacing them is a big ordeal. I'm in very much favor of this program, just like the others to know.
Mr. Mayor?
Trustee Law.
One last question I'd like to say about this program is, one of the reasons why I am in favor of it is because, you know, it hasn't happened that I'm aware of in our community yet, but it could potentially happen, and that is someone not trimming a tree correctly and having dead branches hanging off and falling on a bike rider. I mean, this has happened around the country. The other option is, you know, car accidents, you know, blind spots, you know, when trees are not trimmed properly, blind spots can be created. So again, I'm in favor of giving this program a try, but I think it's something we should definitely monitor to make sure that it's having an impact.
Any other comments or questions? The, Joel, it, a couple of questions, and this is important for, for you and staff and George, which is, before this program really gets kicked off, let's put together performance metrics. So before you start this program, before you sign the contract, what defines success and how are we going to capture the data accurately so we can measure that going forward? Because that's an important point, I think that that's been raised here. And then I think communications are going to be pretty critical. I think there's more than a, I think, I think it's easy with trees to just get used to whatever shape they've taken over the past five, six, seven, eight years, and the last thing that any of us wants is for us to come in and do what an arborist thinks is right for the tree's health, to trustee Lawrence's point, but then someone who had a vision of sort of a wild-looking maple tree, you know, they're going to be very disappointed. So I just think that there's really important that we make sure people know exactly what the program is, when it's going to happen, and then staff is able to report back to the community, we said we're going to do 5,000 trees, we did. We said we're going to do X, Y, or Z, whatever that is, and I think it's really important too, that you staff make sure that we have an Orland Park employee and/or an engaged arborist to make sure that this doesn't turn into wood butchery. I'm pretty, pretty sensitive to that with some of our contractors to make sure that we're measuring their performance and we're reporting back to them, you did the job or you didn't do the job correctly.
Yes, that's in the scope of work. We have control of that and we have the process in place to make sure that the work is done correctly.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Trustee Lawrence?
To your point about appearance, as I've been through the process of having very big old trees that were way overgrown, cut back by professional arborists, I have to say that even though I was prepared in advance that it would be a big change, I was even more shocked than I thought I would be. So I wonder if as a part of our education of residents that this is coming, this is what we'll be doing, when we'll be doing it in your neighborhood, and this is example, some photographs perhaps, showing the very dramatic difference that they do look from before and immediately afterwards, but I can attest that in just a couple of years later, they fill in tremendously, and then just a few years more, they're so overgrown, I can't believe that just a few years prior that they were trimmed. But I think I was prepared because I'd been through it before in other ways, but the most recent one I did it, I was just like, oh my gosh, I can't believe, they cut too much. And then low and behold, a couple of years later, the trees are beautiful.
That was our idea as well, to have some photos, because people can see that better than verbiage.
Thank you.
All right, there's a motion in a second, please call the roll.
Trustee Lawler?
Aye.
Trustee Lawrence?
Aye.
Trustee Leafblatt?
Aye.
Trustee Healy?
No.
Trustee Katsinas?
Aye.
Trustee Malani?
Aye.
Mayor Dodge?
Aye.
Motion passes. Proceed to the next item, Dugan Park redevelopment, de-scoping.
Mr. Chairman?
Trustee Malani?
I move to recommend to the village board approving Option B, Dugan Park, 10 lighted pickleball courts at Dugan Park with a glass enclosure, e.g., pickleball glass. Glass may be, I gotta read all this, glass may mitigate the sound impact by 50%, approximate additional cost, $50,000, 10-year warranty, replacement cost expense, additional maintenance cost, 2 lighted tennis courts, restroom building, and north parking lot with 95 spaces per code, and I move to recommend to the village board to approve all primary renovation elements, including a playground, 20-by-20 pavilion, half basketball court, 360-foot by 210-foot soccer field, a zero-foot baseline field, baseball field, 2 bocce ball courts, a sledding hill, a parking lot, and landscape improvements and detention basin.
Second.
Before we call the roll, we will have the presentation from staff so that everybody in the audience knows what we're doing. Typically, some boards choose to put a motion on the floor before any discussion can commence. You can do it either way at these meetings. It's committee hall, tends to be somewhat informal. You can discuss an item, then call for a motion to pick an option, or you could put a motion on the floor. There's an active motion, I'm not going to call it until we have a, I think, full-throated discussion on pickleball in Orland Park and what we're going to do. So with that, Ray, take it away.
Thank you, Aaron, board members, for this opportunity to talk about more pickleball. So first, I wanted to start off and just go over the initial plan, and trustee Malani just reviewed that, so the plan does include, the initial plan was 10 pickleball courts. Those would be lighted courts, 2 lighted tennis courts, a restroom building, 2 bocce ball courts, an expansion of the soccer field to a full-size soccer field, shrinking the baseball field down to 60 feet, or detention basin, a sledding hill, playground, half basketball court, pavilion, and improvements to the parking lot. So that's the initial plan that was developed as a concept. The project timeline, initially, this plan was to go to Plan Commission on February 18th and to the board for consideration and approval on March 3rd. That was delayed until after April 1st, and it went to Plan Commission on April 15th and to the board on April 21st. The concern with the courts that we wanted the board to be aware of is the proximity to homes. The farthest courts would be 350 feet from homes, the closest courts would be 250 feet. The recommendations as you build pickleball courts, we've learned, is 500 feet from homes and not disturb residents who live in close proximity. The playing season for pickleball is typically April through October, depending on the weather. We would expect players to be out there from 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM, sometimes earlier, sometimes later, if it's a lighted court, middle of the day, could see lighter play if it's a hot day, so it just depends on the weather. With 10 courts, you're going to have potentially 40 players at a time, plus those waiting. As someone had mentioned earlier, a 10 pickleball complex is going to be very popular and is going to draw a lot of people to play. We have four options that we're presenting to the board tonight. All of the options include these elements here, so these are the basic elements, part of the OSLAT grant, so these are all given for every single option. In Option A, that's the original plan, so that's the 10 pickleball courts that are lighted with the 2 tennis courts, the restroom building, the north parking lot will be expanded to 95 spaces, south parking lot would be improved as well, and construction would take place in 2026. Option B is the same as Option A, but it brings in glass enclosure, so we found a product that does mitigate the noise. There are concerns about maintenance, cleaning graffiti that goes with that, and it would have to be replaced potentially every 10 years. In Option C, it changes the, the whole footprint, it includes the primary park elements that I mentioned earlier. It only includes 2 unlit courts, 1 is an existing court, 1 is a court that is a basketball court right now that would be converted to a pickleball court, keeps the 2 tennis courts unlit, reduces the size of the north parking lot to 64 spaces, it excludes the restroom building, and then it builds 4 courts behind the Sportsplex, and that construction could take place in 2026. In Option D is the same as Option C, but we add 9 courts, these are lighted courts that Centennial Park construction could take place in 2026, and this would be located where the ice rink currently is. Potential savings if we de-scope the project and went with, with the courts in a different location. When we worked with the consultant and the engineering, they estimated the courts at $38,000 a court. The restroom building has a line item of $380,000, and then we believe we would realize some savings from reducing the parking lot from 94 to 64 spaces. You can see a little bit of a rendering here, so you see the 2 existing tennis courts, that would be the 2 pickleball courts there, be approximately 350 feet from the homes. Sportsplex courts, we would have 5 lighted courts there, we would do the design and engineering this fall, release the RFP later this fall and award it in early 2026 so that we can begin construction in 2026 and open in 2026. This would be funded from some of the savings that I mentioned from de-scoping Dugan Park if that were selected. Sportsplex, there's approximately 13,000 square feet behind the building, the courts would require about 1,800 square feet per court playing area, 4 courts would be about 7,200 square feet, so it should fit back there without any problem. Centennial Park, there's approximately 27,000 square feet there. Again, that 1,800 square feet per courts, that's about 16,000 square feet for 9 courts there, so a lot of room for a pickleball complex there. Staff's recommendation is Option D, so it is 2 unlit courts at Dugan Park, 4 lighted courts behind Sportsplex, 9 courts at Centennial Park. That would bring 15 total dedicated courts to pickleball courts to Orland Park, and 13 of those courts would be lighted. It also keeps Dugan Park as a neighborhood park. Part of the concern is the impact to residents who live near Dugan Park. It then spreads courts around the town and it keeps pickleball complex within a recreational complex such as Centennial Park, so that's the strength of Option D, we think. With Option D, we would issue an RFP for the central courts for the design and engineering. We could issue that in early 2026. The courts could then be built in 2026, assuming the ice rink were to close after the 2026 season. The other thing we would do is, if pickleball continues to be a popular amenity, is ex- The other thing we would do is, if pickleball continues to be a popular amenity, is explore courts on the east side of town, so one or two court complex, so we could have even more courts for our residents to enjoy. Right now, in Orland Park, we have 22 tennis courts. Of those courts, they're all straight for pickleball. We have one dedicated outdoor pickleball court at Dugan Park. We have six indoor courts at the Sportsplex, two at the Orland Park Health and Fitness Center. The Franklin Loby Center floor is currently being replaced, and we're adding three pickleball courts there. If you do a little research on best-in-class, best-in-class is 12 to 16 mixed-use courts. That's a tennis-pickleball type of court for a population of 60,000 people. So with the plan, we're on track to be best-in-class. In regards to the OzLad grant, in speaking with the state, the state told me that we had to spend at least $600,000 on our project to still be eligible for the grant. We also can apply for an extension within six months of the deadline. We're seeking more approval on one of these options.
Mr. Mayor?
Trustee Leaflet?
So we go from 10 pickleball courts in one smaller neighborhood where the residents have expressed a little bit of trepidation over it, and two more than 15 pickleball courts, and the possibility of even more, spread around town, many of which are together. So I'm assuming it provides a really great opportunity to have tournaments and things like that. So at the, for example, at the Sportsplex, they would have the outside ones as well as the inside ones, so that would be 10 courts right there, even though some are inside and some are outside.
That's correct.
In addition to nine-plus courts at Centennial, to all outside. And we already have the electricity at Centennial, and we already have bathrooms, structures we can use for bathrooms there. And with the Sportsplex, we already have the space behind there and doors that take you directly to the courts.
That's correct.
So they can come inside and cool off, they can go to the bathroom, go right back outside to the courts with no disruption.
That's correct.
All right. Sounds like a good idea to me. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Trustee Lawler?
Yeah, Ray, when is, Dugan Park was originally scheduled to be started next year, right? In the spring?
It was supposed to be started, Dugan was supposed to be started this past spring.
This past spring, so we're behind on schedule.
We are.
And that's not because we're de-scoping or taking out pickleball, it's just we're behind on schedule, right? So when would that have been done, the whole complex for Dugan?
We probably would have been pretty close to finishing in 2025. We probably would have had to finish landscaping in 2026, but had we broke ground, we would have been on track to complete the project within the OzLad grant deadline.
Okay, and so then, the Sportsplex pickleball courts, those would be ready early '26 as well?
I don't know how early is, part of it depends on whether, when you can break ground and start outside work, so March, April. We would do the RFP and do the award in the offseason, so we'd like to do the RFP right away so we can get this awarded in early 2026 after the budget's approved, awarded, and then we can schedule the work, and as soon as the weather improves, then we can break ground and begin work.
Okay, thank you.
Any questions or comments?
Mr. Mayor?
Trustee Healy?
Sometimes I think this board thinks that money grows on trees, but when it comes to this, we can't be sure of getting that $600,000 grant. And any delay in the grant, let's face it, Illinois is not in the best financial shape. They can't believe they can issue, keep issuing this grant or keep these grants open because they're in a, if they don't know it, they're in a financial crisis right now. And I just worry that 600,000 is too much of a, to risk losing. And I'm all for having pickleball courts at everything, at every place, but I just worry about losing this pretty big grant.
Mr. Mayor? Trustee Lawler?
One more point I want to make is, I'm not a, you know, the plan at Dugan was a cool plan. I got no problem with it. But the fact is that there are a lot of residents that do have a problem with it. And I know, you know, looking back on experience, you know, being a former member of the Parks and Rec, when we did Schussler Park, you know, you look at it now, and it's a great concept, but a lot of people came to speak up about it, and it got pushed through as it is. You know, and the aftereffect is, we have this great complex that looks beautiful, but we can't play games and use it to its full potential. You know, and if we go in and we put 10 pickleball courts at Dugan Park, now I know we've spent some money on it previously, but, you know, what happens if it does create a massive issue for residents? You know, and it's going to create a, you know, possibility of lawsuits and other things. And we're going to look back at it, and we're going to say, well, why didn't we take a step back and look at this and reexamine it? And I think that's what we're looking at doing. We have a sports complex at Centennial Park. You know, it's big, it's not right on top of any residences, there's plenty of space there to do it. If we put it, you know, nine courts over there, we're still bringing pickleball to Orland Park. It may be a little delayed, but like Joanna said, we have water that goes to that spot, we have facilities there for people can go inside and cool off, you know, so it's got great views, you know, and there's plenty of parking. And in the end of the day, it's not going to bother anybody, and you can go and play there from 6:00 a.m. till 10 o'clock at night. So I think it's important to take a step back and look at this and say, is there possibly a better place to do it? I think there is, and I think option D is the better plan. That way, it's a win-win for everybody. We're giving people pickleball, we have plenty of courts, and it's not going to be intruding on neighbors.
Other comments?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman?
Trustee Maloney?
You know, so looking back, right, the idea behind Dugan Park was to take the space that we had here and turn it into almost a full-featured park to give something to everybody, right? You know, so we included pickleball, we included basketball, we included a soccer field, right? So, and we are actually saving the basketball court, too, right? So we gave something to everybody, and it's a good plan, and it incorporates something that makes everybody happy, what we're trying to do here, right? Option B should make the residents happy, too, right? You know, because now that could offer some noise reduction up to 50%, I think, so that 70 decibels plus that we were talking about could go down to about 35, which, that's 35. So that's a pretty good significant drop in noise. But I look at the board of trustees meeting, and it looks like we might have already made up our own mind because there's a, you know, change order for the project and de-scoping of it already. So, you know, we'll talk about that in a half hour or so. But changed my mind, right? You know, you've given, you've given good, you know, some good ideas here. We could still have a full-featured park and have something for everybody with option B, and it might be the best choice. It might not be. I'm not quite sure yet, but it would actually create the more pickleball access that we're looking for. The idea at Centennial, I like it. It looks like it can fit nine, and if you maybe extend it, you could even fit 12.
If we wanted to.
If you really wanted to, which would take advantage of that space for tournaments or whatnot. You could have recreational use at Dugan Park, and then also have Sportsplex as well, so you do have multiple places to have the pickleball. Spreading it out might be a good thing, you know, and, you know, maybe this is something, you know, I didn't hear of an option like this in the past, which is fine. We had our options, and we moved forward with it, and we thought it was the best plan at the time. So, you know, again, convince me, change my, help me change my mind. So, thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Trustee Katsinas?
Ray, to do all these here, what do you estimate the cost to be to do the four-lighted behind the Sportsplex, nine-lighted behind Centennial? What are we looking at roughly?
So the courts behind Sportsplex, we're estimating in a little over $500,000. And now that is just a guess based on, you know, just some research on what courts are. And then there would be the A&E would be, so that's the design and engineering would be between 40 and 60,000. I spoke with a consultant, and then there'd be some construction observation for about 44,000. And I'm 100% sure the Centennial Park cost, I think it would be closer to us, between 750 and $1 million. You, again, would have to have A&E fees and then construction observation for that project.
Just on this 10-court, at Dugan Park, it was like 450-some thousand?
It was 2.5 million, and then we had operational funds, so it was a total 3.6 million, but that included a lot of...
All the other activities. Okay, just looking at pickleball. Looking at the diagram of those four courts behind the Sportsplex, that is super tight. Somebody missed a ball, they'd end up in that retention pond.
I think, it's, my bad rendering, I'm not an engineer, sorry, I could get Chris Sheed involved there, so I think when it's actually laid out, it'll actually fit back there a lot better. I think you'll have some sidewalks and the fencing. The fencing surrounding the courts will be eight feet high, and then there'll be four-foot fencing in between the courts, so it should be shaped in the final engineering to be a little closer to the building, not like my plan, that the rudimentary drawing that I did.
In order to save the $600,000 grant for Dugan Park, what is your, you know, opinion on that?
The state really hasn't tipped its hand, so when I spoke with the state about it, they said we had to spend a minimum of 600,000. So I am optimistic that they'll continue to fund the project, but until we submit the project with the de-scoping and a new budget estimate, they won't move on it, they won't give us an official okay or not okay.
Okay, I think it was different in the last meeting where you thought we would lose it completely.
We weren't sure.
Okay.
Miss, are you done?
Yeah.
Okay, Mr. Mayor?
Trustee Leaflet?
So if we were to submit to the state a plan to, the Dugan Park plan with the two courts, and then adding the four courts at Sportsplex, we could still use that funding for both of those things?
No, it'd still be dedicated to Dugan Park.
Dedicated to Dugan Park?
That was the approved project.
Okay.
The state has mentioned that many communities that have been awarded OzLad grants have ran into higher costs, and there's been a lot of communities that have de-scoped their projects, and the state is voted on those in a favorable manner because just costs are more for people that are, communities that are building up right now. So that's why I'm optimistic. But until they say, you know, we don't know for sure.
Well, and you're a pickleball player, too, right?
I'm not, no.
Oh, okay.
I'm a swimmer.
Mr. Mayor? Trustee Lawler?
Ray, really quickly, if we were to do the nine courts over at Centennial Park, being that it's not in that neighborhood, could we look into getting some sort of sponsorship out there to help pay for the cost?
I'm not sure if we're paying for the cost, but we always look for sponsorship to support operations, for sure.
Okay.
I mean, there's always the opportunity for naming rights, so anybody listening that would like courts named after them, we're happy to entertain those phone calls.
Maybe the gentleman from the Pickleball Association could find somebody for us? There you go.
Any other comments or questions from the board? The, Ray, just to make sure that, hang on, I'll grab your comments in just a minute. Can you sign in, sir? Does it sign in form if you'd like to address the board? Yeah. The, Ray, it's, the grant was for Dugan Park.
Correct.
And so, de-scoping or not de-scoping, we still want to get the grant. High probability of that, based on your experience. I want to demystify that statement.
Yes, we hope so.
All right, so then, let's take the consideration of the grant issue off the table. You know, Ray, I've asked for years, and you've confirmed that recreation doesn't have a tree that grows money, correct?
I have been looking quite a bit, I haven't quite found that.
Good to hear. So I appreciate the sentiment of what some of the board members said about, some members of this board apparently think money grows on trees, but I can state emphatically that is not true, and we will deal with a lot of issues prior boards made about money decisions going forward in the budget process. So let's take that issue off the table. There's also comments about this is a full-featured park. Absolutely. Full-featured doesn't include 10 pickleball courts, which could potentially be tournament-worthy in a neighborhood park. Far more suitable, in my humble opinion, to a place like Sportsplex and towards a place like Centennial. The challenge I have with the Centennial plans is the disruption. I think you said there's quite a few people who use the ice rink. Shorter window, given everything's going on in our climate, but how many people are we impacting?
About 5,000 a year. Last year, we had about 5,000 users.
So that's, and we don't know yet when the other ice rink at 143rd and La Grange is coming out, correct?
I think we're thinking potentially 2027.
Yep, that's according to the RDA for the downtown Orland Park plan. Much, much better ice rink. Our current ice rink is a mechanical disaster.
And I would add, so the ice rink gets most its use from the month of December and about two weeks into January, and 5,000 seems like a lot, but when you break that down into three and a half months, it's really not a lot of use. So it's primarily on the weekends and during the Christmas holidays, and in such a short season, you know, we weigh all the time, weigh recreational amenities, and in such a short ice rink season where pickleball could be played from April all the way through any time there's good weather, you're potentially going to have people playing pickleball.
And then, so a new ice rink is on the way. I want to make sure everybody hears that clearly. So there's a sequencing here. So is there a pathway, Ray, where option D, if we choose that, because we have a motion for option B, which we'll deal with in just a second, option D, which is four at Splex, and nine, or I think somebody alluded to, maybe we can get 10 at Centennial, we should be careful about how we sequence that and when we get it done. Obviously, there's demand for pickleball, but I don't want to just automatically disrupt people who are using the ice skating rink, so we should think that through.
Absolutely.
So the timing is still open here, when we do everything, right? If we go, let's say, if the choice distills down to option B, which is essentially Dugan with glass, or we move these things to what I think are better opportunities and better options, which is option D, we can still have the discussion about the timing. So we're mindful about not being overly disruptive.
And we can start Sportsplex sooner because that doesn't really sequence into the timing of the ice rink.
Okay. If the board is comfortable with this one, there's a gentleman who signed in. I think you want to address the board on pickleball. We'll give you three minutes, and then we're going to address the motions. If you could, when you come up, state your name. Three minutes, and the lawyer's tracking you.
Ready, go. All right, hi, I'm John Atkinson, I live at 11044 Woodstock Drive, and thank you for the opportunity to talk this evening. One thing, a little disappointing to say, you heard from the, I took notes at the last meeting, there were a number of questions were going to be, there was a list of questions, things that were raised, and the village was going to get back to everybody with answers to that. I asked Ray about that, nothing's been generated. So, you know, how much money has been spent if the project were de-scoped? Moneys that were spent are gone. It's a million dollars. So is it really, is there a trade-off? Again, we've been two years in the works. Option D sounds okay by me, but, because net-net, it's a gain to the community, which I'm all in favor of. But we've been two years down the road, what goes to say, somebody gets something that doesn't feel right, and all of a sudden, that gets delayed? So what will happen if option D goes through tonight? Will there be other meetings and discussions that could sideline that? And then we're still two years down the road, we've got one dedicated pickleball court right now that we certainly enjoy, but we need more than one. All right? So that's what, that's what I was thinking. And again, I took notes, it was all about the noise, it was all about compromise. I said we had a solution, it's option B, and we could hit the ground running on that. There'd be a lot of happy people. Are there more uncertainties down the road if we go with an option D? I appreciate that answer, and the million dollars or so that's been spent on engineering, et cetera, where does that go? And can we make that trade-off and still end up at option D without things being sidelined? Thanks, thanks for the opportunity to talk.
Thank you. Ray, on the million dollars for the engineering, that was overall for Dugan as well, not just the pickleball, correct? I want to, we got to be very careful about the terms we're using.
The engineering contract that we currently have in place is $238,000, and that is for the whole park.
Okay. All right, so now, there's a motion on the floor for option B. I think that we can do this one of two ways, which we can withdraw that motion and kind of have a quick conversation of other motions, or we can call it and see if it passes or fails.
Mr. Mayor?
Trustee Leaflet?
I, I'd like to move to table this, so that we, on this issue, since we have some discussion.
Do you want to table the motion so we can continue discussing, or do you want to table the item so we're done talking about it tonight?
Well, I guess I'd like to table the motion, I don't think we're done talking about it.
All right, well, I can hold off calling the motion. Let's go back for another round of questions. We've heard some more feedback. Does anybody want to...
Mr. Chairman?
Trustee?
Point of order.
There's a motion to table on the floor. We need to address the motion to table. There's no discussion on a motion to table?
Is it to table the motion or to table the item?
We need a clarification. Is it table the, the entire discussion or is it to table the motion on the floor, which was option B? That's what I need.
I'm sorry that I was not clear. I would, I would table the entire discussion and I apologize for not being clear in my motion.
Second.
All right, there's a motion and a second to table the entire discussion. So we're clear about what that means is then as soon as I call the roll, we are done talking about this for tonight and we'll see you guys again in two weeks. Or we can call the, you know, let's, why don't we just do this? There's a mo, active, go ahead.
The options are, if you withdraw your motion to table, trustee Maloney, if you read, because I, understanding what you said, you, you said you changed your mind to D.
I said change my mind.
Changed your mind.
And we're still discussing on a motion to table, which entitles no discussion.
So take you just?
All right, so I'm going to withdraw my motion because I see that it's created just confusion, so.
All right. We will call the original motion, which is for option B. There's a motion and a second. Call that roll.
Is that for option B as in ball or option D as in, it was option B?
Option Bravo, not Delta.
Okay.
Call the roll, please.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Maloney?
So to clarify, if we vote on the option B that was presented and it is not successful, the conversation is still over?
No, it isn't.
I got a green light. It's not working. That's correct.
That's what mine does.
So then it'll be open for, it'll be open for another motion, trustee. For the next option.
All right, so ladies and gentlemen, here's, so here's what we're going to do.
You beat on the, you, I think you both were trying to get my eyes first. You got your motion first.
Okay, here's what we're going to do. We're going to call the original motion, which is for option B. If it passes, it's option B. If it fails, then another trustee could offer a different option for, let's say, D. So we are calling the original motion so we get a hard consensus, yea or nay, to option B. There's a motion and a second. Call the roll.
Trustee Maloney?
I know, they've been doing that all night long.
Aye.
Trustee Katsinas?
Aye.
Trustee Lawler?
Nay.
Trustee Lawrence?
No.
Trustee Leafblad?
No.
Trustee Healy?
No.
Mayor Dodge?
No. What that means is that option for option B failed.
Mr. Mayor?
Trustee Leafblad?
I would, sorry, I have to get back to the language. Yeah. I would, yeah, no, I know what the word is. I'm just trying to find the language that I want and I'm having trouble. Okay, thank you. I move to recommend the village board approving option D Delta. And here, I'm trying to see it. Four-lighted courts behind the Sportsplex, two unlit pickleball courts at Dugan Park, Dugan Park tennis courts remain unlit, no restroom building at Dugan Park, Dugan Park North parking lot with 64 spaces per code, nine plus lighted at Centennial Park ice rink location. And I move to recommend to the village board to approve all primary renovation elements, including a playground, 20-by-20 pavilion, half basketball court, 360-by-210 soccer field, zero baseline baseball field, two batu ball courts, sledding hill, parking lot, and landscape improvements and detention basin.
There's a motion and a second. Are there any further discussions on option D? Trustee Katsinas?
Here. I just have a real concern I want to put on the record about Sportsplex being able to accommodate four pickleball courts.
Any other comments or questions before we call the roll?
Mr. Mayor? Trustee Katsinas, I did walk the space myself and I can tell you there's plenty of room back there. It's actually a pretty good-sized space. I wouldn't go beyond four courts, but it will definitely fit four. You could probably squeeze five to six in there, but I think four would be the safe bet.
Trustee, or excuse me, Mr. Chairman?
Trustee Katsinas?
I too walked that. It seemed very tight.
I guess, any other comments or questions?
Mr. Chairman?
Trustee Maloney hanging. Trustee Healy?
Mr. Mayor, I just, we have a hard cost on this motion.
We don't yet, no.
Okay, thanks.
Trustee Maloney?
I was just going to say I didn't get a chance to walk it because it was raining earlier, but I did look at the drawing that wasn't to scale and it looked like we could easily fit four there. Sorry, I was just.
That's all right.
Adding levity to this.
No, well, I was just going to see if all the pickleballers can just narrow up the courts and we'll put more in everywhere.
Yeah, I mean, it is a small court.
Any other comments or questions?
Mr. Mayor?
Trustee Leafblad?
This also, this is in addition to the tennis courts that were, are striped for pickleball as well, right? That's what, that's my understanding. So that's even more space.
Mr. Chairman, that was, oh, so sorry.
No, go ahead, Mike.
That was actually one thing that I was concerned about are usually these multi-use courts. For example, the tennis courts in my neighborhood are also basketball courts. Guess what never gets played?
Tennis.
The basketball courts are constantly in use. The same thing at Dugan Park. You're going to have the half court for basketball and I think the recommendation is to put, stripe that for pickleball too. Well, pickleball and basketball is going to fight over that court, so I don't know if that's necessarily a good idea.
No, that was not.
Trustee?
That was actually.
Mr. Mayor? Ray, am I mistaken, but is the basketball court going to be a separate standalone new court?
Yeah, we would put a new basketball court near the playground and the existing basketball court will be converted solely to pickleball.
I'm sorry, I misread that. Okay, so that'll just be pickleball in the back. Those will be the two full pickleball courts and basketball will not have stripes on it. Okay, I totally misread that paragraph. Thank you very much for the clarification.
All right, there's a motion and a second. I hope everybody understands what we were doing there, right? Called sausage-making in democracy. So I think we got to a place, we're going to call a motion and trustee Maloney, I want to call out, I appreciate that comment because I've heard from a number of folks who play tennis, that they'd obviously like to preserve their tennis courts. I've heard from a number of people who play pickleball and it's different or just re-stripping a tennis court and the height of the net doesn't quite get you there. So we're going to spend a fair bit of money. Still looking for that magic money tree, trustee Healy, in terms of spending all this money, but I think it's the right thing to do for the community because there's a lot of demand for this. And I'm thrilled that we worked our way to putting it into places that are more hospitable to the intensity of the use as opposed to what we were doing with Dugan. So I'm glad we got to this point. Call the roll, please.
Trustee Leafblad?
Aye.
Trustee Lawler?
Aye.
Trustee Lawrence?
Aye.
Trustee Healy?
No.
Trustee Katsinas?
No.
Trustee Maloney?
What the? Aye.
Mayor Dodge?
Just for dramatic effect, I'm going to wait. Sorry. Aye. Congratulations. The next one's a pretty exciting item on restaurant permitting, so you guys are welcome to stay or you can head out to the storm. Will you call the roll, please? Or call the item?
Okay. This is a discussion for special use permit for restaurants within 300 feet of residential parcel. This is for a discussion only.
Steve, just speak up a little bit while the room's clearing.
Yep. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and board trustees, on our ongoing series of planning and zoning issues. Tonight, we are here to talk about a potential amendment to the land development code to make restaurants within 300 feet of residential permitted.
Excuse me, can we take this discussions outside?
Go ahead, Steve. Just speak up. Booming voice.
Booming voice. Yeah, so this is basically, we have 230 restaurants in town, which is pretty amazing. This is basically a map of them. They're clustered pretty much along La Grange Road, but there are some other areas that do have restaurants. About 30 of them, which is about one in eight, are within 300 feet of a residential area and they're in basically two groups. Most of them are kind of surrounding the east-central part of town and then there's another cluster of them at 179th and Wolf. And they break down into two groups. So one, we've got like standalone building restaurants and then we have restaurants that are in line, which means they're in a strip center or in combination with other commercial uses. So the way it works now is, well, we'll just talk about the shopping center ones first. That's where a lot of this is occurring right now. So if a new restaurant wants to go into a space that wasn't a restaurant before, or if a restaurant wants to go into a space where there was a restaurant, but it was a while ago, so there's no longer a special use permit, or they want to expand an existing restaurant, you have to go through the special use permit process. Just for clarification, the difference between a special use and a permitted use. A permitted use is we have rules and if you follow all the rules, you can do it. All right? A special use is intended to deal with uses that might have some kind of negative effect. And in those cases, we provide, get public input and allow people the opportunity to give us or use our expertise to mitigate those potentially negative externalities. The other side of this, so what we'd like to do is when we looked at all these uses, we found in almost no circumstance did we ever put any condition on those special uses that were within 300 feet of a restaurant that mitigated any kind of use because we didn't really find any negative externalities. In this case, they were making people go through the process without anything that's really coming out of it. There were a few of these, when I started here and this kind of question came up, one was the Cello Cafe, one was, there was a Middle Eastern restaurant at 8600 159th and then, which is now an Indian restaurant. And there was this discussion about, what are we doing here? And then we had a bunch of them just happen recently and this has come up again, which is what has kind of instigated us asking this question. What we're proposing to do is to make these permitted uses. There will still be some regulations for site things that occur, which would be in rough proportionality. So we're talking about improvements. So if there's, they're doing facade improvements, we can ask for additional improvements regarding facade. If there's a change in the parking lot, we can ask for additional improvements in the parking lot. That happens administratively through a periodic process. So this is kind of the list of the ones that we did recently and in almost, in every circumstance, the condition was you have to meet the building codes, which is already a law. Now, there are some exceptions to this. When, if there's outdoor dining or if there's a drive-through, there's definitely some mega-magionalities. We hear the drive-through thing we go through around and around and around about making sure the traffic flows properly and other things, which needs our input on. And for outdoor dining, we should probably look at that too for the time being. We might in the future come up with some conditions that say if you meet all these things, it's allowed, but that's not what we're proposing at this point. For standalone buildings, we also have a process. If it's a new building, we have what's called a site plan approval, where we're not judging the use, but we're actually judging the new construction itself and we're supposed to be judging just the site. That's not going to change for new, so you'd still have this process for that. But if it's an existing building and a restaurant wants to go in, that would just be also a permitted use unless there's a drive-through or outdoor dining. That's what we're proposing. So we kind of looked at the positives and negatives and there's a lot more on the positive side. A lot of it has got to do with timing. It gets people through the process much faster. They can go right to permit. We can start working on the permit plans. And this is all in reports, so I know we're short on time. I don't want to go through all of it. And then the negative, potential negative is we're not getting any public input, but again, we haven't really gotten any constructive public input on these in the years that we've been doing them. So we're kind of in a neutral to positive with the potential amendment. And then there's also the potential for us to add some standard conditions, where I'd like to go in the future, is that we could say, if you follow all these rules, it's permitted and if you don't, then you have to get a special use permit. But we could also look into potentially writing some standard conditions or gather regulations that are in different parts into one section that says, if you are a restaurant, you must do these things. So that's something that's also potentially on the table.
I'm just looking for feedback. Comments or questions?
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead, trustee. I'm sorry, trustee Lawler?
Oh, okay. Real quick, Steve, so are we looking, are you saying we're just doing this for restaurants? Steve, my issue with this is that zoning is zoning and if we take away the ability to make it a special use and we just say it's now a permitted use, you know, does that take away our ability to, let's say, notice something that maybe the community doesn't really want? You know, I'm not sure how to phrase that, but like an unwanted use in the community.
I'm going to defer to counsel on that question.
Well, not, maybe I'm, maybe I'm asking the question wrong.
They would still need to meet all the other rules and regulations. So parking would need to be met, subject to all the other rules for parking with the 20% up and down. You'd still have to meet all the health codes, you have to meet all the building codes and any other requirement that would be for a restaurant.
Trustee Lawler, you're just asking for some basic feedback tonight to bring it back forward?
Yes.
More formalized updates?
Yeah.
Okay. Why don't we think about that?
Okay. Again, I know you're looking at me like you can't ask that, but it's not what you think it's, it's, I'll just leave it at that for now.
Mr. Chairman?
Trustee Katsinas?
Steve, just to be clear, this is on existing buildings only, correct?
It would be, okay, so we would be taking the used restaurant off the special use list unless it has a drive-through or wants outdoor dining in those places where there are any special uses. So that part's not going to change. It's just whether or not a commercial restaurant is going to be okay as long as it meets all the rules for restaurants.
Okay, even though it may back up to homes, maybe they had an office there and that office lease expires, then you have a restaurant coming in.
Correct. If they meet all the rules for that, which means they've got to have the garbage enclosure, make sure they've got adequate parking.
So he wouldn't get the residents to come in. I mean, an office setting is a lot different than having a restaurant behind you.
Absolutely agree.
That's a concern for me.
I, I hear you, but as was, when we went back, there hasn't been anything that was changed in those circumstances because of the public hearing process.
We just saw residents here for pickleball. I mean, people are more, a little more sensitive, right, about what surrounds them and rightfully so, and their quality of life. So I would say if it's already a restaurant and a different restaurant wants to go in, well, okay. But if it's an office setting where they're nine to five, you're not smelling tacos or whatever, cooking all day, you know, that's a different story, so.
And we do have rules for nuisance laws. For instance, if there are smells, then they would follow the rules for anyone else who creates a smell, I guess, would be the.
But you have delivery trucks too and things that you wouldn't have in an office setting. They're going to deliver food, you know, you're going to have more garbage coming back and forth. So I just have a problem on that with the notification of residents. That's, that's my take on it.
I mean, there are other retail uses that would also have delivery trucks, but we don't make, that we would not make, that currently don't go through a special use process also. So yes, I hear what you're saying, the food delivery is different, but if a grocery store is permitted, the grocery store would be doing that. So, that's just, when we were going for a thinking, I'm just kind of talking through the process that we went through, but your point is taken.
Any other? Trustee Lee Blad?
Here, I'm sorry, my microphone was not. So, for example, let's, just using the example of the office building, if a restaurant were wanting to come and take over that location, they would have to completely change the structure because they'd have to add the kitchen and so they would have to make sure they were up to code on all of those items anyway. It just, it just kind of streamlines the process so they don't have to make other requests or deal with special use issues so that they can just build it out, up to code and proceed with their business. Is this what I'm understanding?
In those zones where they would be allowed? Yes.
Well, yeah, in the zones where they would be allowed, obviously. So, if they're in a zone that they're not allowed, that would never happen anyway.
We're not adding to, we're not looking to add restaurants in a zone that doesn't currently allow restaurants.
Thank you.
Any comments or questions? The, Steve, can you go back a slide or two? You had laid out a couple of, maybe like your slide four there. I'm just gonna keep going, pick on this one as an example. So, you know, new restaurant, so I get the goal and I like the idea that we could reduce the workload on staff and we could be faster. Got that. So let's, let's keep working towards optimizing that. And I, I think the, we don't have to do this as part of the process, so let's separate what you do to streamline the process as long as it's really clear and that we've thought through all the use cases, which is where I think you had some of the questions from, from the board. So let's do that. That doesn't mean that we can't also find a way to communicate to the residents who might be impacted as some kind of courtesy notice. We're, we're thinking about ways that if you happen to live near something and a use might change, there still might be easy ways for us to let people know that there's a change coming, even if it's not required, even if it's permitted, just as a courtesy. So we can take that conversation offline, but that may be something where, I want you to bifurcate the question. So I like where you're heading in terms of the use cases and the process and pulling time out of it, but let's figure out how we do it differently. Then the other question, you can answer it at a future meeting, is 300 feet to the front door, 300 feet to the center of the building, 300 feet to the lot line?
It's generally the lot line, which again is a little complicated with things that are-
So if you had like a lot of parking, if you had a restaurant on LaGrange and then you had a fairly deep parking lot behind it and then you had a row of townhomes or condominiums, they could technically, but even though they're 300 feet from the actual restaurant, they're within 300 feet of the lot line.
Yeah, this is what happened with Cello, is that the restaurant was up front and there was another commercial building behind it because of the way the lot was, we had notified all these people and then the one, people across the street, on the north side of the street, were like 200 and, I don't know, very close to 300 feet away, but they were on the other side of 151st and it was the backs of their houses, you know, so...
Yeah, so, so my request would be, let's, let's think about-
How we measure?
Rationalize that piece, because in that instance, if the building is nowhere close to the homes, but it's a lot line thing that kind of changes the way this feels in terms of the impact from noise, delivery trucks, site sounds and smells of a restaurant, et cetera. So let's try and bake that into the code change as well.
Okay.
Did you need any other comments or direction from the board? Does that give you a-
If anything you guys wanna talk about.
Mr. Mayor?
Trustee, I'm sorry, trustee Lawrence?
I'd like to ask a question. So, we're talking about entities within 300 feet. Does there come a point where if something is within 200 feet or 100 feet, are we talking about a different level of concern that we ought to have?
Well, in most circumstances, the commercial zoning exists and the residential zoning exists. So there's already a set of commercial uses, if someone buys behind a shopping center, that, at this point, the shopping center is there for most people at the age of our housing stock. So yes, there's always a potential for something, but we also have other ways through code enforcement to address concerns if they arise.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Trustee Law-
So, Steve, I guess what, the question I was getting at on my last statement was, I live in the old Orland neighborhood. Technically, that is a, on Beacon Avenue and some other streets down Union, those are special use permits. So, going back to what trustee Katzen is saying about trucks and delivery, you know, they could potentially come up and put a restaurant on the corner of 144th and Beacon Avenue if it was a special use. But if we take away the special use and say that it meets all the requirements, maybe I'm just not understanding what we're trying to change here, but that was my concern, like, you know, coming into that area where you're creating, you know, even though technically it's within 300 feet and it is a business, it technically is a business area.
Yeah, so that's another nuance here. There are some districts where residences are allowed in the same zone as commercial. And I think if you're in one of those districts, that's kind of a choice. Maybe not for Old Orland because it is a newer district, but for, definitely for the VCD and in the core, you know, if all of a sudden we build residential in a commercial district and now all of a sudden the businesses have an additional burden of having to accommodate, and I'm not saying that, again, if it's really, really bad and they're breaking the law, we will address that. But it's a little squishier in these mixed use zones where we're wanting things to be close to each other. And I don't wanna create a disincentive to get to our goals, which is a lively Old Orland historic district, for instance, if we get a group of people that don't want anything by them.
Mr. Mayor?
Trustee Lee Blad?
Are you, sorry, trustee Lawler, are you finished with your question? Okay. I noticed on the pros and, I don't know if you've gotten to the pros and cons page?
I kind of just didn't quickly.
Okay, I noticed that one of the pros is that the plan commission and board of trustees would continue to have regulatory input for special use permits for a new standalone restaurant, restaurants with drive-throughs and restaurants with outdoor seating, which you commented on earlier. So, when we're talking about those smaller places, I mean, in the residential areas, they're limited on space anyway because they're probably not a large standalone building with a very large parking lot. Like, when I think about Orland Oasis, for example, that's a pretty, you know, that was, if another, if a restaurant were to build there, were to come into that location, they, they can't really increase the size of the parking lot. They, maybe they could build another structure if they wanted to and then lose parking spots, but ultimately, if it's a smaller area or if it's closer to, if it's like in a residential area, there's less they'd be able to, to do anyway. Am I correct in that?
Yeah, and so many of the people who are on the list that were coming in were local, smaller, like business owners, don't have the sophistication of the chains to be able to put all this stuff together, there's a significant expense for them. But at an existing restaurant, that would be a continuation of a, let's just say they were, they had half the parking they were supposed to, that's a legal non-conforming use, as long as it continuously operated as some kind of restaurant, we would just let it continue on in general under those circumstances, because the condition exists. We just don't wanna make things worse. If they were to scrape it, they'd have to follow the new rules.
So if they were not-
Yeah, you'd have to, you'd have to get additional properties and knock them down to make probably just the parking lot, so...
Thank you.
Good. Any other comments? All right, Steve, hopefully you got some feedback out of some direction.
Very good, thank you.
We'll proceed to F, non-scheduled citizens and visitors for public comment and items relevant to village business.
Does anybody wanna address the board?
We have Mr. King.
I'm following up First, Second and Third Avenue.
Sir, you, under the law, you do need to identify yourself.
My name is Dave.
No, you need your full name. I'm sorry, under the law, we have to do that.
Well, I'm just following up on last meet, last week's information. Or, I'm sorry, two weeks ago, the information that was provided. Did everyone receive the additional information today? From the last?
This is this.
Right, we're talking about this, George, we're talking about this later, correct? It's on the board agenda for later.
Just wanted to make sure everyone receives it, that's all.
Thank you.
Did you wanna address the board?
Three minutes.
Hi.
Hello.
Go ahead and time it. If you could let us know your name?
Yes, I'm Renal.
Full name? We need your full name, ma'am.
Just, just for the record, under state law, everyone has to identify themselves. You don't need your address, but you need your first and last name.
Okay.
And, thank you.
Did you get it? Did you get my first and last name? Renal, R-E-N-A-L, Perkins, P-E-R-K-I-N-S.
Thank you.
You have it? Mm-hmm. Okay, a couple of weeks ago, I believe I spoke to you, Mayor Dodge, about an incident that happened in K&amp;G stores. And you had said that you were gonna reach back out to me to discuss the matter. Okay, I didn't hear from you, but however, Officer Hanson, he called me. He said he wanted to know what happened and what was going on. He seemed to be a pretty nice gentleman. But as I told him, I said, listen, Officer Hanson, I've been through pure de-hail with this situation with K&amp;G stores. And I'm not gonna stop passing out these flyers. I'm not gonna stop passing them out. I'm going to every mall, I'm going to every mall, every city, 'cause Orland Park is not the only mall. But the only reason why I'm stopping at Orland Park, 'cause it happened in Orland Park. But I'm going to every mall, every city, and I will not stop until they rectify this situation. Now, I have spoken to their attorney, I have spoken to their attorney, and the attorney said that I said I didn't want to discuss it. Well, I was hysterical. When this first happened, I was extremely hysterical, like I told him. No, I wasn't gonna discuss, I'm hysterical. You know, it's not that I didn't wanna discuss it, but I had spoken to so many people until I didn't want to speak, speak to anyone at that time again. So I told him, no, that doesn't mean I didn't wanna discuss it. I just wanted time to deal with the situation. So anyway, like I told him, he knew that I wasn't saying I didn't wanna discuss this. He said, well, you were very hysterical and very emotional. I don't think the word is emotional. I was very wounded in your, in this store, in Orland Park. And thus why, I haven't received any assistance from anyone. Officer Hanson, he told me, he said, you know what, I'm so glad I spoke with you. He said, I did not understand what happened to you. And I did not understand what happened in that store. He said, you know what, I have a whole new outlook. I said, Officer Hanson, this is what happened in that store, this is the way it happened. He said, but you know what, nobody never told your story. All they kept on saying is we don't want her in our store. I said, why would I wanna go in their store? For what? Look, I was attacked in K&amp;G store, why would I even go in that store? I told him, I said, Officer Hanson, with all due respect, with all due respect, sir, that's the stupidest, dumbest thing I ever heard. Why would I wanna go in K&amp;G stores after I was wounded and attacked in K&amp;G stores? I said, now wait a minute, K&amp;G don't own every mall in Orland Park. So, you know, as far as them talking about-
We're at three minutes, please wrap up.
Okay, yeah, but as far as them talking about me being in their store, they haven't seen me in their store. I'm not interested in going in their store. I'm interested in them resolving, in a resolution for this matter. I waited on you, Mayor Dodge, to reach out to me. Now, when I was in the mall, 'cause I was-
Ma'am, you're at three minutes.
Okay, okay, I'm ready, let me wrap up. When I was in the mall, passing out these flyers, 'cause I don't really know nobody in Orland Park. I recently, I'm a recently moved out here. And someone said to me, reach out to Keith. I said, well, who is Keith?
Thank you, thank you.
And they said, Keith is the-
Ma'am, thank you, the limit is three minutes.
Okay.
We've let you go to four. We understand your point.
Okay, well, all I'm saying is, I need a resolution.
You will soon get official communication from the village, thank you.
Okay, well, please, can I get one? 'Cause I haven't got one thus far.
You will get one shortly.
Thank you, I appreciate it. I do, I appreciate it, I appreciate it. I appreciate, but this really affected me and I appreciate it.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
Mr. Chairman?
Trustee Katzenis?
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
There's a motion, a second to adjourn. We'll call the roll and then we'll take a five-minute break before we start the board meeting. Call the roll, please.
Trustee Katzenis?
Aye.
Trustee Lee Blad?
Aye.
Trustee Lawrence?
Aye.
Trustee Lawler?
Aye.
Trustee Healy?
Aye.
Trustee Maloney?
Aye.
Mayor Dodge?
Aye.
We are adjourned at 7:42.
Be back in about five minutes.